Welcome, everybody. This is the Planning Commission meeting, April 4th, 2024. So folks can hear us, yes. Planning Commission meeting, April 4th, 2024, 7:30 PM. We're in room 133 of the Brookfield Town Hall. Who is here, who is not? So, let's see, I'm here, Scott Dale, the Chair. Courtney Knopf, the Secretary, is here. Linda Taylor, regular member, is also here. We are missing Michael Duval and John Mara. Mark Lowengart is alternate, and he will be a voting member today. Moving on, so approve all the minutes of the previous meeting. So first, we have the regular Planning Commission meeting that took place on March 7. Anybody like to make a comment, or suggest edits or updates, or otherwise make a motion to accept the minutes?
It seems pretty accurate, to my recollection, so I'll make a motion to accept them.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll second.
You're second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Good, all right, very good. All were present for that, right? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Moving on to the minutes of this would be this, so this would be the February 15th. This is the subcommittee meeting, so I think three of us that could be part of that. This is a special meeting. February was a special meeting?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
I think so, and then we determine.
Yeah, that's what it says here.
Yes.
Right, that was the special meeting, the first one, yes. So, uh, yeah, so Courtney, Mark, and I were present for that. Any suggested edits or updates to those minutes, to that meeting of the 15th? Or are we good to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 15th.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all ayes? Free zero?
Thank you.
Very good. And then the last would be the minutes for the subcommittee meeting of the Planning Commission for the POCD took place on March 21st. What a bit of discussion on there. Any suggestion to, or updates or edits to that?
None for me.
Yeah?
That's good to me as well.
Yeah, and you want to make a motion, either of you?
Make a motion to accept the minutes for March 21st.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Ayes?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We're done with that portion for now. So, moving on to the new business. We do have the Nine Forest Trail, PL-24-2, J. Timothy Deacon for Mary Kay Johnson, owner. Application for lot line revision. Would you like to speak to this matter?
Sure. Good evening, I'm Tim Deacon, I'm an attorney in Danbury.
Hello.
And if you look at this map, you'll notice I live at Seven Forest Trail.
Okay.
And my client is my sister.
Okay.
So, as we say in business, it's like an old pay file.
Right.
So, I bought my house in 2019, I think my sister bought hers in 2020 or 2021. We had both parcels surveyed, because I was actually buying a little bit of it right away from the Lake Club over on the right-hand side. But when we had my sister's lot surveyed, it was not what it appeared. In the sense that you see the dark lines showing the actual boundary lines. You see the woodshed in the back was approaching over the rear property line. This is also a really neat lot, because two or three owners before, whoever built this house, the entire yard is stone. There's no grass.
Hmm.
It's bizarre.
Okay.
But.
Easy to mow?
Well, somebody was just a summer hoe.
Yeah, there you go.
And it didn't really fit my sister, our, you know, mode there. So, what we also noticed is that on the left-hand side, you'll see where the edge of the gravel was. And, you know, the lot line is much closer to the house than what was being used for the stone and the gravel. So, it's a unique neighborhood. We went to the owner's corp, and much like when I got my right-of-way purchased on the right-hand side of us, Mary proposed to sort of square off the lot to make it actually be more of what it really looks like. So, what we've done here is propose a lot line revision, getting a portion, well, getting the parcels A, parcel B, and parcel AB. Obviously, the parcel B is from this lot 34 that's to the left of Mary's lot. But then the parcel A and the parcel AB are from a massive parcel that the Lake Club owns behind the
Okay.
Behind the lot. So, that is the purpose of the lot line revision.
Just to, so I have my geography straight, okay? So, this here represents the existing?
The existing.
Okay, right. And this would be, and this is nine?
That's nine.
Nine Forest Trail?
Right.
Okay. This portion here represents, this would be otherwise known as 11.
Forest Trail.
Correct.
And the next one over is 13 Forest Trail.
Right, okay. This portion here, which is parcel B, the current owners of that are?
Kennedy Lake.
Kennedy Lake Club, okay. And so that would be then, that would then become part of this.
Right. The Lake Club owns.
Yes.
You know, all of this.
Yep, right.
These are two separate lots. This is a massive one.
Yep.
Parcel.
Okay. And then you have both A and AB also, which are owned by the Lake Club?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
And the proposed deed from the Lake Club is in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
The owner's corp has already voted to approve it.
Okay. Covering, covering all of these parcels, as you noted in here, yes. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
There is one other thing I should maybe mention.
Yeah.
As a condition of the transaction.
Yeah.
You'll see in your packet, the remaining portion of this lot and this lot is being conveyed and merged with this huge lot.
Is that part of what you're requesting here?
Well, it's part of the condition.
It's the only way they can do it. Otherwise, they're making, they're increasing a non-conforming lot, increasing a non-conformity of a lot. So, in order to do this lot line revision, they have to merge the other three parcels. And since they were all the same owner.
Yeah.
It kind of made the most sense anyway, to take these two non-conforming lots and make it one big conforming lot.
Gotcha. The, it seems as though these lot 33 and 34 had been kind of previously subdivided. Was, I should know this, but is this whole area zoned residential, like when you combine these?
I can only speak to the lots themselves that were part of the subdivision that created the Lake Club.
Gotcha.
The large parcel, I can't really speak to. I mean, it's it's on a map.
Yeah.
Some of that, the golf course?
The golf course is on the other side.
Gotcha.
That's just hiking trails and things like that.
Okay, gotcha.
And these two lots, you might wonder, why would the club be willing to do this?
Yeah.
Really wet. I mean, they're soaking wet. And also the ballpark where the store, the boats, is back here. So, these have been vacant lots for a very, very long time. So, they're all getting.
Is the idea behind, part of the idea behind combining them in addition to the non-conformity issue being like, it sounds like this is somewhat like open space, and that this would combine to be more
So, right now, they are existing non-conforming lots. They're not quite useful, I would say, you know, for the example. So, to decrease the non-conformity, but actually get rid of the non-conforming lots. We merge them. Otherwise, they can't be the lot line revision, because otherwise we'll be taking from particularly lot
Thirty.
Thirty-four. Thirty-four. And we're going to be shrinking the size that's already non-conforming. I can't make it any smaller.
Gotcha.
So, in order to get around that, it was to merge the other three.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments on this? So, what you're speaking, that's the only piece of this that I want to make sure I understand. All right, so you're here to represent the owner of nine, and, you know, and how it affects that property. But the condition is also on to the other, the other party, which is the
It will have to be merged before it can be filed, so.
Right.
So, I would expect that if you approve it, then I will get the deeds from the Lake Club.
Which are already drafted, too.
You have the unsigneds.
We have that, yeah.
But I'll get those. Before, and then I can clean the map when it's signed off at that time, whatever procedure you wanted to.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, just, the other party's not here being represented, that's why, that was my point there, okay.
Well, and that's what I said, we had to get their approval to do this before we were going to waste our time
Understood.
Coming down here.
Understood.
They've already approved the transaction.
Right.
It was all up to getting municipal approval for it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, or anything they'd like to bring up?
In relation to the, on Forest Trail, because it says this is lot 30, 34? Which, which?
It's up in here.
Oh, it's this one, okay. I was confused because it's an Indian Trail here?
They renamed some of the roads, right.
Oh, I see.
That was the problem. This is now Forest Trail, right here.
Oh, okay, got it. Yeah, I was wondering if anything was like adjoining New Milford side, but no, that makes sense, okay.
I believe, I think he's already looked at the deeds draft at this one point, or did we discuss them with him, so?
I think he was the one that sort of mandated that this had to be dealt with.
I don't have any other questions myself, to understand. Anybody want to make a motion, or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it seems pretty straightforward to me, so making a motion to approve the lot revision, all right? Is that actually what I'm, sorry.
Yeah, so it would be
Thank you. Motion to approve the, yeah, application for lot revision for Nine Forest Trail, PL 24-2. J. Timothy Deacon for Mary Kay Johnson.
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion, further discussion on this? We have to have some conditions on this, right?
So, as far as the condition, it would say to file the proposed deeds
Right.
prior to filing the Mylar on the land records?
Yeah. Subject to the conditions, yeah.
If I could just comment that maybe I should submit them to your office to make sure that they're all together, because the way we drafted them, I need to record the map and the deeds all at the same time.
Okay.
So, that's just because they're referencing the map, so it's not like I can record the deeds and not have the map.
Okay.
All right, so the condition could be that I bring all the fully executed documents to the land use office for their approval, and then the release of the map.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, that makes, okay. So, shall we restate the motion?
Yeah. That was like going in one ear and out the other, but yes, let me try. So, making a motion to approve the application for lot line revision at Nine Forest Trail, PL 24-2, with the condition that Timothy Deacon and the owner, Mary Kay Johnson, bring all of the required, you know, documentation to the land use office to get that signed off on before they file the deed. Does that make sense?
I think that'll cover us, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? No? Okay. Ayes?
Aye.
No ayes?
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll move on to, now we are going to our old business, our old and continuing business, which would be the plan of conservation and development. So, Courtney, is there anything you'd like to bring up there?
Just a quick update, just for those folks who weren't there at the subcommittee meeting. So, we met a couple of Thursdays back and did a few things. We kind of revisited final time and I think finalized the timeline for executing this plan update, which would bring us forward to next fall, I think around like October of 2025, with the idea that we have everything wrapped up and submitted to the state prior to the merging of the Planning and Zoning Commissions. I think we're all on the same page around that. We talked quite a bit about, or started, I should say, started to talk about community outreach and engagement, having a web presence, talking about, you know, like starting to think about a survey that would go out to folks, and just having a very preliminary conversation there. And so, the goal of the next POCD subcommittee, update subcommittee meeting will be to take, I think, a closer look at some, like stakeholder analysis, like, I guess, have a conversation about stakeholders, and who we want to make sure that we include. And then, there's a workbook on community participatory planning that I just sent to Laura, so nobody has seen it yet. I sent a few resources, there's that. There are a few, just like eBooks that are full of activities that are kind of interesting. So, we can maybe, you know, if you're interested, you know, take a look at them and see if anything really jumps out to you. And then, next time we get together, we'll start to really hammer that out. I think we're giving ourselves a couple of months to figure these things out for ourselves, so that we're kind of putting in the time upfront, doing our due diligence, so that once we really start to roll this thing out in the late spring, you know, over summer, with the idea of like, a lot of the face-to-face community engagement happening in like late summer, fall, that will, yeah, we'll be ready to go, and people will be aware of what is coming down the pike, and they're hopefully excited to participate. So, I think that's it. The other thing I should say is, we sent, we decided to send out letters to the chairs of the various commissions, boards, departments, who were like identified as project leads in the existing plan, just to ask them to comment on like, if they could talk about the status of these different action items. And so, Laura helped with that, thank you so much. We sent out a bunch of messages, and we're starting to hear back from folks. So, Greg, like already responded, which was great, with like, just responses to everything. First selectman Steve Dunn wrote back to me, he wants to meet next Tuesday, and just, he said it would just be easier to like, talk through it. So, I was planning to meet with him at nine. I, yeah, I don't know if, he had just written to me directly, but I feel like if other people, like Scott, if you want to be a part of that, I could probably ask him, and that would probably be fine. But that's on the books, and I'm also just happy to report back to folks on that. And I think we'll probably hear from other folks, hopefully, over the next couple of weeks. It sounds like some of the, like the Conservation Commission was talking about receiving the message, so.
Just be cognizant on that particular commission, because unfortunately, they only meet once a month.
Yes.
So, I do know that it's possible that they might not be able to get it back to
That's okay, yeah, no, I think that's fine, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're responsive, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, I think that's kind of where it's at. So, over the next month or two, we're going to finish up that benchmarking of the existing plan. We'll come up with our final, kind of, this is our structure that we want for the new plan, like sort of the table of contents, the sections we're going to make sure we want, and cope with the strategy, and then go from there. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. Yeah.
Making some big steps?
Slowly but surely, yeah. Chugging along, yeah.
Yeah, I mentioned, I mentioned to Courtney, just as we were starting, I ran into the folks, I guess, the Energy Commission, who were here before us, and just to talk a little bit about sustainability, and what we might be able to put together there. Because, as I noted before, we have, that's part of many towns' plan, it was never part, at least directly, part of Brookfield. So, see where we can go with that.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
So.
Yeah. If it's like not there, it's kind of like obvious, it feels obvious, you know, especially when it's more and more commonplace, but it just feels like that's
Right.
That like interfaces with economy and housing and transportation and all of it, so, yeah, makes sense.
Anything else, Mark, anything you want to add?
No, as far as the POCD goes, I've just been continuing to do some research on a few different areas that I'm focusing on. I've done some research in the transportation area specifically, just to see, you know, like how our plan would fit into any state plans that could be coming down the pipeline over the next decade. And just compiling that right now.
Great.
But if you're having a meeting with the first selectman on Tuesday, you said? Okay, if, I'm not sure if that, if how many people would join if it becomes a quorum?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Three, yeah, so, um, yeah, but
Okay, I understand.
But I'll take really good notes. And, and because like, if you notice the message, I think you were CC'd on the message to him, like the Board of Selectmen, they were identified as leads, like in cross-cutting the plan, like in all different areas. So, there were definitely some that were like within your sections that you were looking at. So, as I get information from him, I'll just make notes in that template, so I'm not like overriding any of the great research that you're doing, but we're just kind of like working together, we can use that to kind of like verify some of the research that you're
Okay, great.
Finding, you know, about the existing stuff, at least. But all that additional stuff that you just described, like thinking about the state transportation plans, that's great, yeah. That's really helpful, yeah.
Any other comments? Linda, any thoughts?
No, you're doing a great job.
Okay. All right, good. So, of course, our next meeting, we'll have it in two weeks from today. That will be for the, the subcommittee of the POCD. And, yeah, that'll be at seven o'clock.
Yes.
Okay. All right, move on. I don't think we have any of the business proper. We do have some minutes from some of the other commissions that we can take a look at. Just if you had a plan, a chance to look at it, if any of it pertains specifically to us, or of any other interest, for any reason. This, these are the minutes from March 4th for the Board of Selectmen. They just met, what, Monday, right? Yeah, a couple days ago, as well. So, anything anybody like to bring up regarding that? I think the tower, there was, I don't think there was any further discussion on that Monday. The proposed tower near High School.
They're coming back at the May meeting to discuss the tower.
Yeah, right. If not, I've got to zip through this, I guess. There's zoning, zoning minutes, this is from March 14th. And they just had one, what, last week, right? Well, one before us today, but one, one last week, I believe. And they had the open hearing on cannabis.
Correct.
Which they're going to have more open hearings on that subject.
Was that pretty well attended?
It was. It was really well attended. We also received about, don't quote me 100%, I'm going to say around 26 pieces of correspondence before the meeting. I think about five or six after.
Interesting.
So.
What's the vibe, could you, like?
It was definitely leaning in the no.
Uh-huh.
If you watched the meeting, I believe there was only three people who spoke in favor. One was an attorney, one was a distributor, some kind of business connection, and one was just a regular citizen, so. Very brave citizen.
Statewide, I believe, at least when it passed, I believe that is somewhere around 63 or more percent in the state favored it. So, yeah. And I think nationally, there's different polls, obviously, but we saw 70% is nationally, so.
And that's only the people who came out. So, you also have to factor in.
Not necessarily representative sample, yeah. But, interesting, okay.
Two citizens, but one in favor, I'm sorry.
Did we end up getting clarity on that, there was the question?
So, it won, so it's one, one, and one, it seems like, for the initial proposal, but they're morphing the regulation as they go based off of the feedback. So, I don't want to say that is definitive, because it very well could turn into none.
For the hybrid definition?
Yes.
Yes.
Or it very well could turn into just one entirely.
Just one entirely, that's a combo, yeah.
But I think they started it more open for one of each.
Gotcha.
So, the plan is one more public hearing, and then after that, they'll, the plan, two more?
I believe two more.
No more than two more. So, we're up against a deadline with our moratorium being up in May. And the zoning commission will want to get regulations on the books and effective prior to that. And it's, you know, it's, so, there, I do anticipate them having it open at least for one more public hearing, maybe two, but after that, they'll have to act.
Make sure they have a quorum next two meetings, you know?
It's a very popular subject, I think everyone showed last time. With the, well, almost everyone.
Any other further comments on that, on zoning, or? And then there's ZBA, if there's anything in here related to us. EDC, there's always something interesting in EDC, whether it's related to us or not, there's always something interesting. Block party, right? Anything, anybody like to discuss anything on, within any of those minutes?
As far as the EDC goes, are we going to be meeting with Greg Dendowski at some point? Will he be attending a meeting, or will we have a sit-down?
For the POCD?
Yeah.
But I imagine, right?
I'm sure, yeah, yeah, we had one, I had a meeting with him and Laura early on, and, yeah, I think at the, we discussed a couple of weeks back, we'll figure out soon, but not immediately, like once we have our ducks a little bit more in our own, through our own structure, then we can pull him in. And he, did he not, did he CC you on the response?
I saw it.
Yesterday?
I didn't really get to look at it today, but
Yeah, so he gave us a lot of information, but I think he's, he has sounded quite willing to communicate with us.
Awesome.
So, yeah.
Of course, we'll take all the data we can, right?
Yeah. Oh, just really quickly, I did the data front, we had spoken a couple of meetings back about just doing some of the internal, like the in-house mapping, and I just wanted to give you an update that I was able to get everything squared away on my computer through work, so.
Okay, great.
With ArcMap and ArcMap, ArcJS Pro and stuff. So, I just, mostly to Laura, because I had asked you, oh, maybe I could come in and like use the office, I don't think, we wouldn't need to worry about any of that. And anyone who wants to do mapping, we could use my system, you know, so.
That's awesome.
It's excellent.
So, yeah.
We have limited mapping in town.
More maps.
The matter of
I'm always in favor of more maps.
Yes.
Data and maps. All right, informal discussion, anybody like to bring anything up? We're in formal discussion today. Oh, you would like to, sure.
Any update on something for John Van Heis?
Yes, thank you. So, it sounds like it's probably going to be a red bud tree in front of Town Hall.
Okay.
I'm still working out, because we were in non-planting season and not buying for plant season. But Parks and Rec and I are trying to, it will definitely be here. Still trying to figure out the exact location. She keeps on telling me, right in front and to the right. So, until she's here and able to point it out to me, I'm hesitant to give you the exact location, but it should be handled. So, I, until she's here, able to point it out to me, I, I'm hesitant to give you the exact location, but it should be handled, absolutely.
Great, that'd be great, that, but, yeah.
Hopefully, everyone likes the red bud tree.
They're pretty.
Like a little plaque.
He's a Red Sox fan.
So, if that's something you wanna go for, with a, in a plaque in addition with, um...
I think a small plaque would be nice, yeah.
Like in honor of...
Yeah, definitely.
And, and just, before we get any kind of like verbiage on that, I will, first, I was waiting for the, the plants to come available this year for our planting, to make sure I could actually offer it.
Okay. Anything else anybody like to bring up? No?
My one question for Courtney and, and Scott.
Yes.
Do you want me to attend the meeting on Tuesday with Steve or no?
Oh, um, I guess that was a question I was asking maybe to, I feel like I'm happy to just meet with him one-on-one, but if, um, folks feel like they wanted to be part of that, 'cause he had only written back to me, I wasn't sure if he had a preference, I could ask him, you know, if he was open.
I'd, I'd like to attend if, if I could.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure that, that'd be fine, so let me just double-check with him and make sure that's cool. Do you, do you want to, or?
It, it was entirely up to you on whether or not you felt that I need to, if not...
I don't think necessarily...
My extension, I'm right downstairs.
Yes, okay, yeah, if we, if we need something urgently, I'll reach out, okay, cool. It's gonna be here, yeah, at nine, so, yeah, okay.
All right, uh, if there's nothing else?
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody like the second one, motion?
Second that.
All right, all eyes on that.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you for attending and participating.